...allegations of perjury and falsifying public records and documents, property tax fraud, and voter fraud. And that's all I have tonight.
All righty, thank you. We will close oral communications and we're going to recess and go to successor agency. So, Madam Clerk, can you call roll for successor agency?
Member Bridegum?
Here.
Member O'Neil?
Here.
Member Deidre Wynn?
Yeah.
Member Klaffenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here. Okay, we already did oral communications, so we'll move on to consent calendar. There's two items. Can I get a motion?
I motion it to Deidre.
Second, George.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Bridegum?
Yes.
Member O'Neil?
Yes.
Member Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Member Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yes.
And Chair Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Thank you. Any matters from successor agency members? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn over to the sanitation district board, and I'll hand it over to Fatt.
Okay, Madam Press, we call roll.
Member Bridegum?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Klaffenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Member Deidre Wynn?
Here, sorry.
Vice President O'Neil?
Here.
President Bowie?
Here. We just done the auto communication with the council meetings, so move right on to consent items. I have two items. Do I have a motion, please?
How about Mr. Klaffenstein?
I'll second. O'Neil.
Madam Press, call the votes.
Member Bridegum?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Vice President O'Neil?
Yes.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
That's all we have, and so move right on to matters. Any matters from the members? Hearing none, I now adjourn the sanitary district meeting and back to council. Mayor Jones?
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll reconvene city council. That takes us on to consent calendar. It's recommended the items 2A through 2N be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull any items. So, do I have any requests to pull? Or else a motion?
Deidre motion it.
O'Neil, second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bridegum?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Neil?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Thank you. Takes us on to public hearings, and we have one item listed, item 3A.
Item 3A is adoption of a resolution denying the appeal and upholding the planning commission's decision to approve conditional use permit number CUP 339-11 revised 2020. And Ms. Chung, I'm sorry, Ms. Kim and Chris Chung from the planning division are here to provide a report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Chris Chung, our urban planner, will present the item.
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Before you tonight is a request to conduct a public hearing to consider the appellant's appeal of the Garden Grove Planning Commission's approval of conditional use permit number CUP-339-11 revised 2020 regarding a request to modify the approved plans and conditions of approval under the CUP 339-11 revised 2014 for an existing indoor sports facility, MAPS Sports Facility, located at 12552 Western Avenue to expand the hours of operation, allowing daytime weekday business hours and activities, and to expand the existing parking lot to provide additional parking spaces. In 2011, the city approved amendment number 8-162-11 and CUP-339-11 to allow indoor sports facility uses in the MP industrial park zone, subject to a conditional use permit, and also approved a CUP for the MAPS Sports Facility, which has been in business since 2012. In 2014, the city approved an amendment and modification to the MAPS conditional use permit to update the business operation, which notably increased the maximum number of persons allowed in the building, implicitly authorized the MAPS to charge its patrons for parking, restripped the existing parking lot to increase from 170 to 191 parking spaces, and established a carpool incentive program. The MAPS is an indoor sports facility where the primary sports played are basketball and volleyball. Conditions restrict operating hours to be from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM Saturday and Sunday. The applicant is requesting to expand the hours of operation, allowing daytime weekday business hours. The proposed hours are 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, seven days a week. Most businesses in the nearby industrial areas are closed by 5:00 PM during the weekdays and closed on the weekday, uh, weekend. Currently, weekday nighttime activities include organized instruction, practice, and league play. And proposed weekday daytime activities are youth summer camps, senior pickleball, and typical scrimmages and organized instruction. A parking demand study was produced and conducted by K2 Traffic Engineering, a professional firm with California licensed traffic engineers who provide traffic engineering consulting services. The study was prepared to address projected parking demand and assess any potential impacts from the new weekday daytime hours and activities. The MAPS intends to host basketball and volleyball youth summer camps, up to a maximum of 300 participants, between the ages of six and 18. Summer camps include organized instruction, practice, and scrimmages. A summer camp may occur Monday through Friday between 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And typical weekday nighttime activities, which begin 30 to 40 minutes after any youth summer camp ends, will also include similar activities. It should be noted that the typical activities of a youth summer camp will be similar to weekday nighttime activities. The difference being that nighttime activities are comprised of very smaller groups, while the youth summer camp is a single larger, a larger single group. On February 28th, 2019, the MAPS held a trial session youth summer camp, which took place between 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And the intent of this trial was to allow K2 to record observations and measure the anticipated parking demand for a typical summer camp. The trial camp included 195 participants, 15% of the participants carpool, carpool to the facility. And during this trial session, a maximum of 55 parking spaces were in use. Based on the observations, K2 projected that a youth summer camp with 300 participants would require 80 parking spaces. And the MAPS property currently provides 191 parking spaces. Therefore, during a summer camp at full capacity of 300 participants, it is projected that there will be a surplus of at least 111 parking spaces available. It should be, excuse me, it should be noted that the MAPS will not be permitted to charge for parking during weekday daytime hours. Pickleball is a paddleball sport, which may include up to two to four players in a single or double style play, and the dimensions of a pickleball court are slightly smaller than a volleyball court. The MAPS facility has spacing for eight basketball or volleyball courts, which also result in a maximum of eight pickleball courts. The plan, uh, the MAPS plans to introduce adult pickleball during off-peak hours between 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM during the week. Between, but because participants of pickleball will primarily be adults, it is anticipated that each participant will drive their own vehicle. And with eight pickleball courts, an assumption that all courts will include doubles play of four players per game, this would amount to 32 players maximum at any one time, with the anticipated parking demand of 32 parking spaces. In the event that a youth summer camp ran concurrently with pickleball, the projected combined parking demand is 112 parking spaces, which out of an abundance of caution, is calculated in a maximum participant scenario for both. It should be noted that if youth summer camp, that if a youth summer camp and pickleball league did run concurrently, both activities would not be able to utilize all eight courts at the same time. It is reasonable to assume that the court areas would be shared between the two, resulting in a smaller youth camp or the use of less pickleball courts. Therefore, the actual parking demand may be substantially less than 112 parking spaces. Nevertheless, based on a maximum scenario of 112 spaces required, the existing 191 parking spaces on the property would be more than adequate to accommodate the parking demand. Again, as a reminder, the MAPS will not be permitted to charge for parking during weekday daytime hours. Since the approval of the MAPS CUP modification between 2014 to late 2019, there had been no reported code enforcement cases or complaints received related to parking issues. In December of 2019, the Code Enforcement Division received a complaint that MAP, uh, that MAP patrons were accessing parking lots and, on nearby properties for drop-off and parking purposes. While the 191 parking spaces on the property is considered adequate, in order to address any current and future potential parking issues, the applicant is proposing to expand its carpool incentive program by increasing the number of carpool spaces from 45 to 65 to further promote carpooling and reduce parking demand. In addition, the applicant is also proposing to add an overflow parking area. During any peak times and events, the parking lot of 78 additional spaces will be available to the MAPS patrons. The MAPS will now provide a new total of 269 parking spaces on the property. Staff finds that the additional overflow parking lot, along with the expanded carpool incentive program, will further mitigate potential on and off-site parking issues. Additionally, the applicant has prepared a parking management plan to establish and implement mitigation measures to minimize potential on and off-site impacts to surrounding properties. The parking management plan will be implemented during any peak demand periods as necessary, and to ensure the operation does not cause a nuisance, hindrance, or problem with either on or off-site parking and circulation. Most notably, the, uh, the management plan would implement the following measures. Implement a two-lane vehicular queuing area entirely within the property with parking attendants directing drivers for capacity of up to 20 vehicles. To eliminate vehicular queuing on Western Avenue. To relocate the parking fee collection kiosk from its current location near the front of the southwesterly driveway approach. First, push further into the center of the property and to, to, to further allow adequate vehicular queuing space on the property, eliminating on-street queuing on Western Avenue. Creating a designated drop-off zone on the property to place parking attendants and adequate signage as necessary at nearby sites to prevent MAPS patrons from unauthorized parking on off-site private lots and to control vehicular access entering and exiting the site. The community and economic development department, including the traffic engineering division, have reviewed the parking management plan and are supportive of the plan. Conditions of approval have been incorporated into the conditional use permit, requiring implementation of this plan. And out of abundance of caution, it should be noted that conditions will continue to require that additional or new mitigation will be required as necessary as part of a new or modified parking management plan, subject to review and approval by the city, should any new issues arise in the future. On August 5th, 2020, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting at the MAPS Sports Facility. Prior to the meeting, public notices were duly mailed to all property owners and tenants within a 300-foot radius. The neighborhood meeting was held by the applicant to present project details, garner feedback from the attendees, and answer any questions. One person from the public, a representative of the Container Supply Company, was in attendance for the meeting. Questions and concerns raised by the attendee included, but were not limited to, potential liability exposure from MAPS patrons crossing the Western Avenue Street to and from and/or near the Container Supply Site and vehicular stacking issues on Western Avenue after the project is approved. Following the neighborhood meeting on August 20th, 2020, the Planning Commission considered the CUP request. One speaker from the public, a representative of the Container Supply Company, spoke in opposition to the project, citing similar concerns raised during the neighborhood, uh, meeting. No other members of the public spoke in favor or of, or in opposition to the project. The Planning Commission voted 5-0, approving CUP-339-11 revised 2020 with an amendment to add condition number 42, which states, "In order to determine if the indoor sports facility business has been operating in compliance with these conditions of approval, this conditional use permit shall be reviewed by the Planning Commission six months after its effective date." On September 9th, 2020, the appellant, a representative of the Container Supply Company, filed an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of the conditional use permit. The appellant attached a letter to the appeal request outlining comments in support of the appeal, noting that "the original approval of the amendment and the conditional use permit allowing the establishment and operation of the indoor sports facility was predicated on the fact that said use would not operate during weekday daytime hours. It would not operate during regular business hours, primarily industrial business area, during weekday evenings and the weekends. That special operating conditions for indoor sports facilities prohibit indoor sports facility, uh, uses from impeding normal functions of the permitted uses in the industrial zone. That a container supply company had witnessed on numerous occasions that stacking of cars on the Western Avenue waiting to access the MAPS parking lot due to the collecting of parking fees. That the Container Supply Company has witnessed MAPS patrons parking on their lot, uh, on the CSC parking lot areas to avoid paying the MAPS parking fees, and then running across the Western Avenue Street. That allowing the expanded hours during weekday, weekday daytime hours would create a dangerous situation for surrounding businesses where a potential mix of truck traffic and pedestrians illegally crossing the street would create an unsafe situation. And finally, that the MAPS has previously operated and held events during non-permitted business hours." Staff has reviewed the appeal request and recommends that the city council uphold the Planning Commission's decision to approve conditional use permit number CUP-339-11 revised 2020. Therefore, it is recommended that city council conduct a public hearing and adopt the attached resolution denying the appeal submitted by the appellant and upholding the Planning Commission's decision to approve CUP-339-11 revised 2020. This includes staff's report, and we are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any, uh, this will be a public hearing will open, but any clarifying questions or comments about the report? Okay, let's go ahead and open the public. Oh, George?
I was just gonna make a question with, uh, in regards to, uh, Western, and I, and I know it's been an ongoing issue there with the stacking of cars on Western. I, I understand that the city's gonna go out and, uh, paint the curbs, repaint them red, and reestablish that area, um, so, to mitigate that. But is there any provision where, uh, the business would have a representative watching for that? Maybe during the peak times and radio in whenever somebody tries to park off-site and run across the street, you know, to, to ban them from, uh, entry into the location until they park right? I, I know, uh, there was another, uh, complex not too far away, um, that went out of business, but they had a person like that who would, you know, to mitigate parking issues. Was that, was that part, uh, put in the conditions?
Yes, Councilman Bridegum, this is Chris. Uh, there is a condition in, uh, number 41 as part of the parking management plan that requires parking attendants, so not just signage, but actual parking attendants, at to, um, prevent patrons from parking on unauthorized lots, uh, and private lots.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was, uh, included. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and open the, uh, public hearing. Madam Clerk, is there anyone wishing to speak on this item?
We do have two speaker cards. Um, the first card is David Choi, and we'll just give him a moment to come into the council chamber.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. My name is David Choi. I represent Container Supply Company. We're the, uh, operating company immediately west of the MAPS facility. We've been operating there since 1968, making cans and ales for the food industry. And we've been operating so quite peacefully until MAPS was recently allowed to operate in the area. At the original onset of MAPS coming into the area, we stated our objection. We were concerned about the safety, the presence of children in an industrial area, and potential negative effects to our business and its operations. I enumerated many of our concerns and negative experiences we've had in the numerous letters to the city, and I ask you to take those letters and add them to today's record. Our primary concern is on the matter of safety. This is an industrial zone, and we continue to argue that a business geared toward children should not be in an industrial area. Safety is not just our concern, but it's that of the city. It was a primary concern when this project was originally proposed in 2011. As I read through the numerous memorandums and reports, the basis by which the non-conforming use was allowed to be permitted to operate in an industrial zone was on the notion that safety concerns could be mitigated. The mitigation was affected by allowing MAPS to operate during hours that were non-concurrent to the industrial users in the zone, namely by limiting the operating hours from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM on weekdays and on extended hours on weekends, when most of the industrial users would not be operating in the area. The very definition that the city used to define an indoor sports facility in Title IX was, "Indoor sports facilities means an indoor space used by teens to practice sports or engage in league, uh, club play, most often during weekday evenings and on weekend days." All the documents produced by the city used terms such as, "Use will not operate at the same time as regular business hours. At no time shall an indoor sports facility impede the normal functions of permitted uses in the zone. League play is scheduled for after regular working or school hours. Will operate after regular business hours." These terms seem to leave very little room for doubt or ambiguity on the justification for bringing a non-conforming use into an industrial zone. The safety issue hasn't changed. The definition found in Title IX has not been changed. Yet, we're here to discuss the CUP that goes against the very definition of the use as well as the justification used to approve the original use. It would seem appropriate that before the CUP is considered, that an amendment to Title IX, its definition and the justification for allowing a non-conforming use should be visited thoroughly embedded, including a new traffic study as a proposed use will dramatically change. It's our belief that the initial consideration of safety was appropriate and that the decision to limit the hours of operation to be non-concurrent to industrial users in the area was a fair and fair compromise for all users. Our experience to date has not been one that's been pleasant. We've had parents who park in our parking lot. When we ask them to leave, some of them will do, and others can become belligerent. We've had parents who dropped their kids off in our shipping area, and the shipping area works kind of like a horseshoe, so it's very convenient for parents to be able to pull into our driveway, drop their kids off, and exit our facility while allowing their kids to run across Western Avenue. The issue is, kids are running across Western Avenue, and we have a shipping dock that's in full operation during business hours. And so that creates a danger. We also have trucks that are coming into our facility and other trucks into the area that queue up in the median lane. And when they do, and kids are running across the street, it creates a, uh, very dangerous situation for the children because oncoming traffic can't see the kids behind trucks. These are the parent, uh, problems that we've inherited and are left to work through. This should not be the case. If the hours of operations are extended to all day, we can only expect that the problems will be exponentially compounded in the summer months when children are out of school. It's dangerous for both the children as well as for our employees. As an industrial user, we have large trucks moving in and out of our facility. For shipping trucks that are not familiar with our area, they're not expecting children to be present in the industrial zone. And all it takes is for one child to get hurt and everything to change. We don't want this day to come, but it would be inevitable. The applicant is one that has consistently been in violation of their current CUP. Uh, you've heard that there haven't been very many complaints. We haven't complained much, quite frankly. We, we could have, but we tried to be a good neighbor and limit our complaints, but when it became intolerable, we started voicing our opinion. In addition to years and years of the MAPS operating outside of their CUP conditions, even as recent as, uh, just several months into their CUP approval from the Planning Commission, we've had multiple incidents where we've had to report to the Code Enforcement Department of the city where up, uh, where the MAPS was operating outside of their conditional use permit and operating hours. For years, they've, uh, even as recently as these months following the Planning Commission hearing, the MAPS continued to operate outside of its permitted hours. Now they're asking for an extension of their CUP. I can't imagine why, why the city would reward an organization that comes its nose at their approved uses. There's also procedural issues I've raised in previous letters. I ask you to take those into consideration as you deliberate. In conclusion, I'd ask that the city council to deny this applicant. We also ask that MAPS cease to operate in violation of their original CUP. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? Another speaker?
The next speaker that we have is Marty Walker. We'll just give him a moment to come into the chamber.
Hello, this is Marty Walker, managing partner of the MAPS Sports Facility located at 12552 Western Avenue in Garden Grove. Good evening, Mayor Jones and city council members. I hope you have all had a chance to review the file provided to you by the city staff. It is of the utmost importance that you appreciate the immense amount of traffic engineering studies, reports, and other work products the MAPS Sports Facility has produced over the past two years, all at the request of the city staff. This body of work was important to support the city staff and staff's recommendation for approval of CUP number 339-11 at the August 20th Planning Commission public hearing. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve resolution number 5982.20, including the revised conditions of approval, of which we have read and are in agreement with. The MAPS appreciated the careful and thorough deliberations taken by the planning commissions, planning commissioners appointed by the city council in approving our application to amend our CUP, which was for, number one, expansion of the MAPS hours of operation to include weekday daytime hours, and, number two, to add an additional 78 onsite parking spaces. In addition, on August 5th, 2020, at the request of the planning commissioners, we worked with the city planning staff to properly notice and hold a neighborhood meeting at the MAPS. Nearly 200 notices were mailed out to all property owners and tenants within 300 feet of the MAPS Sports Facility. In addition to myself, another member of the MAPS management team, the only other attendees were Mr. Chris Chung, representing the city of Garden Grove as an observer only, and Mr. Choi from the Container Company. Obviously, the lack of attendance at this neighborhood meeting indicates that the overwhelming number of neighboring businesses surrounding the MAPS do not object to our application that, again, was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission. So, again, in the past two years, we have produced all the traffic engineering studies and reports requested by city staff. This resulted in the staff's recommendation for the Planning Commission to approve the MAPS current application, which they did unanimously on August 20th. Therefore, it is very disconcerting that the Container Company would allege and fabricate- would allege and fabricate information about the MAP's business practices when only one complaint has been filed with the City Code Enforcement Division since we opened for business almost nine years ago. After all the MAP's effort to mitigate the Container Company's concerns, it's very disappointing and frivolous for them to appeal your staff's recommendation for approval of and your planning commissioner's unanimous vote to approve the MAP's conditional use permit 339-11. We would respectfully request that the Garden Grove City Council deny the Container Company's appeal of the Planning Commission's approval, thereby allowing for the adoption of Resolution Number 598220, approving conditional use permit 33911, including the revised conditions of approval. Thank you very much, Mayor Jones, and all City Council members for your time and thought tonight.
Madam Clerk, any late entrants, any more comments?
Nope, there is no other comments.
Okay. Colleagues, any questions from either of those two, or they probably left the room already anyways? Can we close the public hearing? Everybody okay with that? Yeah, okay. Let's go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll go ahead and deliberate amongst ourselves. Colleagues, any questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, one quick question for me. I heard in the staff report that should this get approved tonight, the Planning Commission would be rehearing it again in six months. Is that true?
Yes, Councilman Bradigan, it would be from the effective date, six months. It would go back to the Planning Commission for re-review for complaints.
And they would be reviewing any traffic problems for their deliberations, correct?
Correct. Any complaints, concerns, any reported issues? Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Colleagues, any other questions or comments or a motion?
I'll move it if there's no other questions.
I'll go ahead and say. Sorry, Tuha, did you need a second, or did you have any other comments?
No, I make a second. I have no comment.
Mayor Jones, I have some questions for staff and some comments.
Please go ahead.
First of all, I've been through quite some, you know, neighborhood of Tahoe meetings regarding various projects, you know, in our city in the past of, you know. And I understand it is extremely difficult for, you know, resident or businesses to put aside their affair and come to Tahoe meeting or community meeting to address that either their concern or support a project. So I would not necessarily, you know, base my decision on the number of checks on or the number of, you know, support for a given project. What concerned me is the, you know, insistence by the storage container business next door to came to the Tahoe meeting, came to the planning commissioner, fired an appeal, and my understanding is that people who fired the appeal had to pay for a certain fee, not cheap. And then again, come to the City Council to express that concern. I think that concerns need to be taken seriously. I do not understand, you know, the extent of the issue involved until I be there and take a very close look at the situation. I cannot just base that assessment on just, you know, reading from the papers. I look at this project, I only start looking at this item very recently on Monday. So I don't have enough information to really assess the situation, but because of the concern from both businesses, on both sides of the conversation. On one hand, I rely MAP a very first credit. They are trying to expand their businesses, which provide sport activity for the youth, which is a good thing to do. But then also, on the other hand, we have tremendous concern from the business next door. These are the two businesses I have to deal with, with the situation up close. Is there a way, and so I have tremendous of concern on whether approve or deny this appeal. My question for staff is, there got to be something in there so that if it is adversely affecting local business, that we can, you know, take measure on it. For example, obviously, on this CUP, we have condition that require MAP to have staff manage the traffic so that people doesn't park or drive into other businesses to drop off their childrens or to park there. But how do we enforce it if they violate it? You know, if they violate it, what penalty should we do? I've been at various projects, for example, the ones that are close to my, that are next to my residence, an AMPM gas station with the car wash. I was very concerned about the operation late into the night of the car wash that might create a lot of noise for, you know, for us. And I was assured that, yes, they will see operation after 10:00 PM. But to date, sometime I hear noise until midnight. Should I call and report to the city? I don't want to do that. So I just have to put up with it. The other issue that I have is they are not supposed to unload supplies, you know, between the hour of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM in the morning. Sometime I see truck, you know, being there, you know, after midnight and unloading things. So then again, I would just try to close the door and try to cut, you know, deal with it, as opposed to calling the city and complaining, because I don't want to do that. So I can't understand a lot of business that might have issue with it, but they say, you know, huh, come on, you know, we just accept it and just move on with our businesses. So my question for staff is, and then again, the car wash. After why, at first it's clean, now recently there's a lot of bad order coming from it. My wife asked me to complain to the city, but then I said, well, I don't want to do that, you know, come on. City government going to the city court enforcement and complain about an issue at the neighbor next door? I don't want to do that. So I can have a lot of sympathy for business next doors. Bottom line is, if we approve this tonight, and, you know, the business next door are surrounding it, if they cannot, if they have some issue, what option do they have? If they continue to have a parking or traffic issue, if they call and staff coming over and find that it is, if they have evidence that they violate the conditional use permit, can we set it down? Can Chris, Chris, can you comment on that?
Yes, Councilman Bowie. Yeah, as with, you know, most, as you referred to, the car washes, or any business type that requires a conditional use permit, we have, the city has conditions of approval that the operator is expected to abide by. When they don't, and there are violations, you know, as you mentioned, you know, the city recourse and tools are to the Code Enforcement Division for when complaints are filed. You know, there are up to $1,000 administrative citations that are issued. Specifically for the MAP Sports Facility, there are a couple of conditions that directly relate to this matter in terms of if there are any issues reported, you know, to code enforcement or to staff, you know, we will do, you know, our due diligence to investigate. If there's any evidence provided by anyone from the public, you know, we'll take that into consideration. And the conditions do mention, you know, as far as the condition number 42 for six-month review after the effective date. So it'll come back to the Planning Commission for a re-review. But also, there's a condition regarding any nuisance or hindrance, if anything arises or anything reported. The city does have the recourse to restrict the use of the facility, to implement more mitigation measures. And then, of course, the final would be to revocation of the conditional use permit.
Follow-up question. If we approve this or not approve this appeal is the right word for it. And MAP is able to move forward with that plan. Do they have substantial investment in it, and then that if we, if, you know, it's turned out that they do not adhere to what the CUP, you know, mandate. It is, and if we, if we, you know, not approving their continued to use after six months, would that be, can there be a, you know, investment damage to their, you know, damage to that investment?
Yeah, I believe Marty Walker, the MAP's operator, would be best positioned to answer that question. Regarding.
So we've already closed the public hearing. Let me let Omar take a crack at that one first.
Yeah, Mayor, as a member of the City Council, in terms of investment, based on the application and the conditions of approval, they will have to do additional, provide additional parking, so that's going to be an additional investment. Other than that, I don't know that they're going to be spending much more in terms of improvements, but they are going to be required to do some restriping and providing additional parking, which, you know, can cost them some cash. In addition to that, I want to point out that there's another condition of approval, number, number 30, that authorizes staff, city council, or planning commission for any reason, including if there's complaints, to bring back the item for additional conditions and for further considerations. So we have a lot of conditions of approval already that that helps the city in making sure that the applicant is going to be complying with all these conditions.
And then my last question, just before I can cast my vote, with respect to the complaint from the container store business. I understood that even though the operator of container store business came to this meeting and expressed that they have witnessed numerous, you know, incidents, but they only fired complaint once. Now, did we talk to them about the, the staff talked to them about the severity of what they have seen, experienced, and make a determination whether that is a, that they want more research into it?
Yes, Councilman Bowie, this is Chris. From the, sort of the creation and preparation of the parking management plan was, the impetus of it was partly due to the complaints and the report filed by the Container Supply Company in terms of certain incidents and things that they had witnessed. And so the MAP Sports Facility from a prior meeting had continued the item to take additional time to prepare a comprehensive plan to manage certain issues such as that for onsite and offsite parking issues to ensure that their patrons are parking on the property and that there aren't, it isn't a continuation of those types of issues.
I see. So their concern that they expressed to staff have been communicated to MAPS. And they, throughout the last, let's say, couple months or a few months, they have taken that into consideration and come up with the, and with measure to address their concern in their traffic and parking management plan.
That is correct. That is correct.
Well, I don't have any further question. I just want to express one more comment before I vote. I am very concerned with the storage container business, and I will continue to take that seriously. However, given the, you know, explanation and criticism from staff, and because it is only a six-month temporary approval that we will, planning commission will, you know, review this in six months. I would tend to support it for now. But during the next six months, I, and I will also hope the government from District One will also visit the, visit MAP and visit the storage container to make sure that there are no ongoing issue when it get into, you know, you know, operation. So I think that is important because I think for the storage container business to, you know, express their concerns about this throughout the process quite a few times. I think that is very important. And also, I won't stop to take a look at that and see if they have to submit a appeal fee. Hearing their concern, I start feeling that, that we, you know, I won't stop to see if we can reimburse them the appeal fee, especially when we did not grant the appeal. But that is something that I need to address with the city managers separately. So that's all from me, Mayor Jones.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like a follow-up.
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, no, I too really take those concerns from the container company very seriously. I've been over there many, many times over the years to MAPS in that area. And I've seen some of the parking problems firsthand. So I know they exist, and I know they're not fabricating any, anything. It's a reality over there. With that being said, I am curious to see the results of the mitigation efforts that MAPS is doing. They put a lot of money in a traffic study, they put a lot of time. And I want to, you know, give them the benefit to see if this is going to help improve the situation. And, you know, in six months from now, we can revisit it and see if it helped or not helped. So, you know, just in response to Councilman Bowie, you know, I have been there and I'll continue to be there and monitor the situation.
Thank you. So anybody else? Otherwise, we have a motion by George and a second by Tuha on the table, and we could go to vote. All right, let's call the vote. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bradigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cloughenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right, that takes us on to Item 4, Commission Committee Matters. We have two items, 4A and 4B, so we'll start with 4A.
4A is to receive and file Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee's annual report for fiscal year 2019-20, and Finance Director Ms. Song is here to give you a report, as well as the Chair of the Committee, Ms. Sandy Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Ms. Mayor and members of the city council. This item before you is a report prepared by the Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee for fiscal year 2019-20, summarizing the activities taken during the year, as well as the committee's findings and recommendations. When Measure O was first enacted, the city resolved to establish an oversight committee to ensure the accountability and transparency of the use of this tax revenue. The committee is to give an independent voice in overseeing the Measure O funds. Ms. Sandy Thomas, Chair of the Measure O Oversight Committee, is here tonight to give you the committee's first annual report. Ms. Thomas, would you like to present the report to the city council?
Yes, thank you, Patricia. Good evening, Mayor Jones and city council members. Thank you for having us. As you know, the Oversight Committee was established in February 2019, and it's the committee's responsibility to review the city's annual mid-year and year-end budgets to ensure that the funds from the 1% sales tax increase, which began April 1, 2019, is being used as intended. The committee held our first meeting on July 22, 2019, and City Attorney Omar Sandoval went over the Browns Act Code of Ethics to the committee. We reviewed Resolution Number 9540-19, which is the Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee, and reviewed the adopted fiscal year-end 2019-21 budget, and the Measure O tax collecting for merchants, which began on April 1. The purpose of the committee is for us to review the city's annual general fund and mid-year and year-end audited financial information. And we want to look at it to make sure, does the current audited financial information reflect that the Measure O Public Safety and Vital City Services tax was collected and appropriately spent? And we all agreed that it was. Also, does the city propose general fund annual budget and CIP plan protect and maintain the city's core services, including public safety? And we concluded it was. We had a recommendation at that meeting that the committee members requested to review the audited financial statements of the city for the fiscal year 2018-2019, prior to our next scheduled meeting. And in December of 2019, Finance Director Patricia Song did provide the committee members with that financial statement for review. Our next meeting was held on January 21, 2020. We, we had an overview of the fiscal year 2018-19 audited financials, and updated on Measure O revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year of 2019-2020. In our conclusion, the committee has reviewed the financials, which were determined to be reported properly, and approved by unanimous vote. We had our next meeting on September 21, 2020, and Finance Director Patricia Song reviewed with the committee the draft Measure O report before you now, so that the committee could review it. And the committee reviewed the draft annual report and was approved unanimously vote. Budget Manager Anne Efrid also reviewed with the committee the amended adopted fiscal year 2020-2021 budget, highlighting budget adjustments as a result, as a result of the revenue decreases due to the COVID-19 pandemic. She also reviewed with the committee the fiscal year 2019-2020 Measure O revenue expenditures. Revenue from Measure O is estimated at about 20 million. Public safety accounts for 72% of the general fund exposed expenditures. Additional discussions from the committee, Finance Director Patricia Song did provide a summary to the committee on the financial impact due to the COVID-19 and the significant loss of revenue from the transient occupancy tax. Expenditures related to the COVID-19 pandemic response have totaled approximately 2.2 million, which included direct costs of 481,000, and over 1.7 million in personnel costs that was diverted for a different use. And it was recommended by Chair Thomas, ask the city if, if the city can request from FEMA reimbursement before the pandemic is over, and the Finance Director Song responded, yes, and the city will continue tracking those costs related to COVID-19 to ensure the maximum cost recovery. So, the committee did approve the report before you. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions or comments, or this is an action item to receive and file?
I'll move it.
O'Neill, second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cloughenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right, 4B is just an acceptance of a resignation from Traffic Commission.
Item 4B is acceptance of Kevin Hurley's resignation from the Traffic Commission.
Councilman O'Neill, I'll move to approve his resignation.
I second it. Ms. Deidre.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cloughenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Thank you. That takes us on to Item 5. Items for consideration, we do have two different items, so 5A.
Item 5A is authorize the issuance of a purchase order for fire hydrants with United Water Works, and I believe Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy. This is Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, the city council is being asked to authorize the purchase of 160 American-made fire hydrants from the United Water Works. These hydrants are needed to support the city's fire hydrant replacement program, which in turn supports the city's firefighting efforts. On September 21, staff issued an invitation for bids on the hydrants and received eight bids. United Water Works was the lowest responsible bidder at $318,265.36 for 160 KLO wet barrel fire hydrants. The purchase will be made using the Water Enterprise funds, and there is no impact to the general fund. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Or a motion?
O'Neill, move to approve.
I'll second. Cloughenstein.
Okay, thank you. Roll call vote, please. Reminder to please mute your mics.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cloughenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All righty, 5B.
5B is to approve Second Amendment and authorization of an increase to the purchase order with Fidelity National Information Services, Inc., and extension of the contract for electronic payment services. And Ms. Song is here to give the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you is a Second Amendment to a contract with Fidelity National Information Services, or FIS. FIS has been serving the city since 2008. They provide electronic payment processing services, including web-based payment solution, pay-by-phone, electronic fund transfer, and debit or credit card payments. The initial contract with FIS was approved by the city council in 2008. The contract renews automatically every year, and the fees are based on agreed-upon contractual rates for each type of payment and the volume of the transactions. The many payment options offered by FIS provide convenience to the residents of the city, as well as our other consumers, customers. With the increase in transaction volume, the cost of the service has been increasing steadily. In October, the Finance Department initiated a fee negotiation with FIS, and was able to successfully reduce the transaction fee for credit and debit card processing from the current 2.54% to 2.35%. Based on the current card transaction volume, we estimate annual savings to be approximately 35,000. In exchange with the lower rate, the city will need to lock in the term of service period for three years. The annual cost for electronic payment processing services is estimated to be 350,000. This amount is included in the existing operating budget for various departments, including finance, community economic development, and public works. No additional appropriation is necessary. At the fund level, we estimate 60% of the cost would be borne by water utility, 10% by sewer enterprise fund, and 30% by general fund, and these are all transaction-driven. Staff recommends that the city council approve the Second Amendment to the service agreement with FIS, and authorize the issuance of an annual purchase order not to exceed 350,000. This concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Sorry, I was unmuted that whole time. Thank you, Patricia. Colleagues, any questions or comments, or can I get a motion?
I'll move it, George.
Deidre, second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cloughenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right, that takes us on to Item 6, ordinances presented for a second reading and adoption.
Item 6A is Second Reading of Ordinance Number 2918, which is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Amendment Number A 292020 to amend the city's official zoning map to change the zoning of the property located at 8932 Catella Avenue, Assessors Parcel Number 13204121, from OP Office Professional to C1 Neighborhood Commercial."
Thank you. This is just a second reading on the old care ambulance site. Can I get a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, O'Neill, this is District 2. It's just, the property's just west of Magnolia at Catella. I'll move to approve the second reading there.
Cloughenstein, second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cloughenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right, that takes us on to matters, and we do have one item listed, 7A, which is Discussion of a Resolution of Commendation for Orange County Hospitals and Healthcare Systems for Their Contributions During the COVID-19 Pandemic, as requested by Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Thank you, Mayor Jones. I think the title is, of the resolution is pretty self-explanatory. I just thought it would be nice to do this, you know, to celebrate our hospitals and all the hard work that they're doing. So, I would hope that this council would stand with me in order to present a resolution to them.
I'll second it.
Thank you, George.
I, I do have a, a comment, though, Mr. Mayor, if nobody else does.
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, one, one thing I noticed, Garden Grove Hospital falls under this resolution, but we're, we're kind of forgetting the other hospital, the Kaiser over there. Maybe we should take this opportunity and, and include them in this as well.
Mayor Jones, I'll just answer that specifically. I was reached out by CHOC in order to do the resolution of commendation, and we added Garden Grove Hospital, seeing as it's one of the prime hospitals here in Garden Grove. I don't have an objection to adding in Kaiser if staff feels that, you know, we can put something together to add in. But I, I just want to make sure that I distinguish the fact that this was a request asked specifically by CHOC.
Okay. Let me just clarify that this is not listed as an action item for tonight. So, what we would be voting on is just to agendize it for next week, and then maybe we can just sort of weigh in on exactly how we want to shape it, kind of offline between now and then, or if there's any specific recommendations that staff can consider if they craft this over the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, staff will follow up, however directed by council. We could, we could investigate looking at adding some Kaiser, whereas for Kaiser to the resolution, or we could prepare a second resolution just for Kaiser, if that would be appropriate, and the other hospitals would prefer it that way. So, we're, we'll just follow the wishes of council.
I think maybe a second resolution. Oh, go ahead.
I would ask that staff look into that, because Kaiser technically isn't a hospital, it's a medical center. So, I just want to make sure that we're distinguishing this, this resolution is specifically for hospitals. So, if we could look into that.
Yeah, I agree with Kim.
What says hospitals and healthcare systems?
I would recommend, this is Councilman O'Neill, since Kaiser's in District 2, I would just recommend we do a separate resolution to, to honor the folks that work over there at Kaiser. They've been doing a great job through this whole pandemic. I think probably a separate resolution, just to keep it clear, would be good. I don't think anybody would have a problem with that.
Probably more meaningful for each of them, too.
Mayor Jones, this is the customer, Bowie. I think if we start to name separate hospital and medical clinics, we might have a lot of them, because then, you know, the microdial medical clinic has also been very proactive with, with COVID. And so, they also deserve recognition as well. They are one of the pioneers in coming up with measures to detect the COVID, you know, people who, who might have COVID. So, I think, I think it's, it's best to have one, this is also, I think, keen spirit is not to recognize individual hospital, but to recognize the, the effort of all of the people in the medical field to, to help and then put their, you know, 200% in to, to try to cope, the public to cope with, with COVID. I think if we, we have a general resolution to recognize all of that effort would be better than, than having individual ones. You know, unless, unless we, we're willing to, to target one of them, one by one.
I understand, and you say that we're distinguishing, you know, hospitals from medical centers, et cetera, and no doubt in my mind that other entities and agencies have done a tremendous amount of work. I, I just wanted to, again, reiterate the fact that this was a request to me by CHOC Hospital. just wanted to, again, reiterate the fact that this was a request to me by CHOC Hospital to ask for this for the other hospitals as well, included under the umbrella of Providence Hospitals. And because we have a hospital situated in the city, we could not not include Garden Grove Hospital. I think the level of work that hospitals do in comparison to other, you know, primary care or medical centers is a little bit different. And I think we've done some other resolutions that would encompass that work for nurses and physicians, et cetera. If there's a desire for the council to do something separately, then by all means, someone else take that charge and create that resolution. This was a specific ask to me to do a commendation for hospitals in Orange County. I would like to see this commendation move forward if possible.
Yeah, I agree with Kim. I think she brought this forward specifically for that hospital. And, you know, we do them separately. I'm thinking we should recognize COVID, I'm sorry, Kaiser. And Fat brings up a good point with Dr. Dow's clinic over there. Maybe, you know, we work on the hospital one and have staff appropriately draft the others with input from the various council members over the next two weeks, and then we can bring them forward next week, or the next meeting.
This to us, I concur with Councilmember George Brightigum. So I think we should move forward with Kim's proposal.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, or I think we have a motion in a second?
So, Mr. Mayor, just so I understand, so we will, this current resolution will be on the next council meeting for action. And then, in the meantime, Maria Stipe and I will connect and touch bases, and council members who are interested in this, in doing a second resolution should contact us, and we'll work with you on a second resolution for, depending on people's wishes, for Kaiser and anybody else.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. This is Councilman Bowie. I'm okay with that. And I would like for the record to also request a resolution for Michael Dow Medical Clinics.
Let's maybe take that separate, do we? I mean, I don't know. So, and-
Well, maybe that would be part of what the council members will talk to us over the next two weeks.
Yeah.
About a separate.
Yeah.
So this one, this current one will be on for approval next week, and then we'll bring another one next, in two weeks, for council to look at-
Yeah.
And agendize the following week.
So two themes here. One is there's a specific item agendized by Kim Nguyen that was based on a specific ask, and I think we want to respect that and kind of proceed forward with that. The discussion led to kind of a broader theme of during COVID, we've got a lot of sort of medical-related, you know, healthcare systems and/or hospitals that are probably worthy of some recognition and accolades for their service during the COVID environment that we've been facing. So maybe we broaden the discussion into that. So, okay, we've got a motion and a second to proceed on the agendized item. So can we go ahead and do a roll call vote on that? And this is just to agendize it for next week.
Councilmember Brightigum?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes, and thank you everyone.
Protem O'Neill?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
And before we move on and just sort of graze over the other concepts that came up on that, if there were to be a second one, do we want to do a broad sweeping general resolution to cover everybody else, or do we want to try and take inventory of the specific names of groups that have been most relevant within the space, like Kaiser, like Dr. Michael Dow, and maybe others? Any thoughts on, kind of while we're on this vein, to try and move something forward in that regard?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, this is O'Neill. I think that might be a good idea, unless there's any objection. I mean, maybe we look at just one broad resolution to cover the rest of the city.
Well, if we did one resolution for hospital, CHOC Hospital, et cetera, I think since we have only a couple, you know, medical service provider in Garden Grove, Kaiser Permanente, and Michael Dow, and Yinhua is the third one. So we have three in the, in our city that are large enough. I think it probably would be nice if we can recognize them individually.
What about Altamont?
I'm not familiar with that, as I also-
They're huge, yeah. Why don't we, okay.
This is Councilman Klaufenstein. Is there a way for staff to maybe give us a list? I mean, maybe-
Yeah.
Is this, you know what I mean, something that's kind of organized? Here's everybody that's in this field, this group over here, and then we can decide if we want to do one sweeping resolution, or if we feel that there's only a specific few, and so that could award them something individually. I just think it'd be nice to have this, all this information organized, so we make sure we don't forget anybody.
That's great. I don't think we need to take any further action or belabor this any further. Well said, Stephanie, and I think, I think staff hears that and can come back with kind of a recommendation on maybe how to approach what we're trying to accomplish outside of the specific accolade for CHOC and for the Garden Grove Hospital. So, okay. With that, we'll move on. We'll go around the horn for Matters. Anyone have Matters? District One, George?
Yeah. First of all, congratulations during the election to, we had John O'Neill, Stephanie, and Kim Nguyen. Congratulations, as well as Steve Jones, our re-elected mayor. So I just want to congratulate all the victors in the last election. With a sad heart, I'd like to announce the passing of Mr. Howard Singer. Howard Singer was a 50-year-plus resident of Garden Grove, District One. He was also a 10th degree, yeah, 10th degree black belt. He, for decades, he'd provided private and group instructions to many members of Garden Grove community. He used to put on a lot of the Lady Beware classes in the 80s and 90s, where he'd teach women self-defense. Anyway, he passed two days ago, and just like to let the city know.
All right, thank you, George. District Two, John O'Neill.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment. Just want to make sure that everybody, you know, there's a lot of people still struggling out there, not only with COVID, the stress of the past election, but there's a lot of people hurting that are unemployed and are going to be unemployed for a while, and a lot of people are having a hard time. So I want to encourage them to please reach out, family, friends, other agencies that can help with food and other support. So I just want to encourage people to please reach out if you feel lonely, or you feel like you're all alone in this, you're not. There's a lot of people struggling through this, and please reach out to us at the City Hall. If you need to, just reach out. There's a lot of resources that can be tapped into. So that's pretty much it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Deidre Tuha Nguyen?
Thank you, Mayor Jones. Just want to, first thing, just want to congratulate to the mayor, Steve Jones, for your reelection. Councilmember Stephanie, Councilmember Kim Nguyen, and Councilmember John for your reelection. Looking forward to work, and continue working with all of you. Second of all, I just want to say today is 245th birthday of the United States Marines. My dad was also a Vietnamese Marine, but once a Marine is forever Marine. So I just wanted to say happy birthday to the Marine Corps. And tomorrow is Veteran Day. It's a day to honor those who have served, who are serving, and who will serve our country. So thank you to all. And just like Councilmember John O'Neill, you know, we go through a difficult time, and we have resources. So any constituents in the City of Garden Grove, just reach out to us, to any council members. If you need any help, or the city staff for any resources, we have resources out there. We, you know, if you need any help, just reach out to any one of us. And thank you so much. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowie?
Yes. First of all, a big applause and congratulations to you, Mayor Jones. You've suddenly pulled through a very big victory. So my happy you. Also, I would like to congratulate my colleagues, Councilmember members Kim Nguyen, Councilmember John O'Neill, and Stephanie Klaufenstein. So the good things about coming out of this election is we are all intact, our council members are intact. And so we've been working together for the past four years and some for the past many years. So looking forward to continue our commitment to our city and residents. Also, on the second note, and thank you, Councilman Tuha Nguyen, for bringing up the veterans. I too prepare to express my appreciation for the men and women in uniforms. You have sacrificed so much for our country and for many of us. We are, you know, forever indebted to your services. I pray God to keep a, you know, to bless you and keep you safe. Thank you. Thank you very much. And lastly, I would like to touch on the issue that I have had been the forefront of my campaign, that is public safety. You know, the 2020 census will soon show us that the official count for our population will be much higher than the number of 180,000 people, number of the 2010 census. But even with that number, I believe our population will soon surpass it by manifold because of the ADU, because of the high-density housing that the state has mandated us to build an additional 19,000 units in the next 10 years. Without, even without that high-density housing, the ADUs alone will cause our population continue to jump quite a big number. But, you know, even without that, even with the population that we have as of 2010, our current police and first responder resource is inadequate to deal with those demands that have asserted upon them. In fact, we know, and they have said, and we also know, that our police department and firefighters have to bend backward to try to make things work, to try to keep us safe. So, you know, given this, you know, green increase in population, I know we will have to have a lot more sworn and non-sworn officers. We need to have more firefighters and more paramedics over the next few years. Currently, our headquarters is aging, very, very old. It's not adequate to deal, you know, when, you know, a big earthquake comes. It's not adequate enough, you know, when disasters strike. And it's not adequate enough for, to maintain the services that we are facing today. So even if we have the funding in the future, in the near future, to hire more officer, we will not have enough facility to house them, to house their vehicle. You know, I have said that many, many times on the dais and off the dais. Public safety is at most important, because without public safety, we will not be able to sustain growth. So, you know, looking forward, in order to have more officer, we must start the process to design and construct the new police headquarters, and we need to begin that process immediately. During the past few months, I have given a lot of thought about it, because I do want to hire more officer. I do want to hire more firefighters and more paramedics. But I know that in order to have that, we first have to have space to house them. So I think about that, and I have come up with a lot of ideas to address those issues. Just to name a few, you know, the police headquarters will cost tens of billion dollars to design, build. So in order to have the funding for that, of course, some of that money will come from Mezzano, which is now in question because of the COVID. But there are other ways to fund for that project. If the state meant, the first one would be if states mandated us to develop, you know, more high-density development projects, then we should have an additional fee, development fee, beside the current fee. But for those high-density development fee, we need to, we need to, you know, access the additional fee for the high-density project towards the cost of building the headquarters. Number two idea would be, we need to work with state representatives, like Mr. Tom Daly, and if the 72 Assembly District election is toward Deidre Nguyen, then we work with her, or if we're with former Senator January, and then we work with her office, to, and also with the governor office, to solicit the state funding for the office, for the headquarters building, because after all, the state is those who's mandated that we need to build 19,000 more units. We also need to have staff working and seek federal funding for the police headquarters. And another idea that I have given a lot of thought to it is we should consider a bond to finance the police headquarters. Now, most of us do not want to resort to that, you know, to the bond, because that is a form of, you know, borrowing money. But I believe that once the COVID is over, our economy will be rising again, and we'll be able to pay back the, for the bond. Having said that, I would like to ask my colleague to agendize for, you know, the next council meeting, to consider and form a council-driven task force to begin that process. And I would like to also be a member of that task force, because this is an issue that had been, that I had been so passionate about for the past few years. So again, in summary, I would like to ask, you know, council members' support to agendize for next council meeting, to consider forming a council-driven task force to work with the, you know, with our police departments, and the city management, to start the process of beginning the design and construction of our new police headquarters.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, George.
So if I'm, I'm assuming I'm hearing this right, he wants to start a task force? I thought we already had the plans going up, I mean, or being drafted.
We have a design. I heard we have a design, but we don't think, other than that design, I don't know if we have any plan to move forward.
Well, maybe we could ask the city manager.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
Let's ask the city manager if that would be beneficial to help the process along.
Let's ask the city manager if that would be, uh, beneficial to, to help the process along.
Well, there's a couple of things I want to mention. First of all, council members will recall, uh, it's been a while now. Uh, but we, at the end of last year, we've done, uh, we've done some good preliminary work so far on our public safety facility, uh, planning. Uh, you can go on our website right now. I think it's under our transparency link. And, uh, on that link is this, the report that you got, uh, on some of the preliminary results we got for public facility planning. I think if you recall that, we, um, we looked at, uh, what a brand-new building would cost to the tune of, I think, anywhere between seventy and ninety million dollars. So, um, and then there were detailed, uh, there was detailed preliminary work that was done by our consultant to give, uh, give us a good idea about, you know, what, what kind of space needs does our police department need, uh, in the future going forward? And, uh, it was fairly detailed. Uh, and then, of course, at the end of the year, uh, going into this year, we got hit with COVID and, uh, you know, with everything else going on. Uh, we, you know, we've lost millions of dollars, uh, in TOT revenue. Um, and of course, that'll be a big factor on one of the things that Councilman Bowie mentioned, uh, which is, uh, public financing for a building. He mentioned bonds, but, uh, w- we would have envisioned at some point in time, given a good, strong economy, that we would have looked at public financing to, uh, to, uh, construct and, and complete that project. So that would undoubtedly have to be a big part of what we're, what we're thinking about, you know, going forward. So a, a lot of it is, you know, when I think, uh, when you think of the budget and financing that goes into our public safety forces, and you heard our Mezal committee person, uh, give a recap, uh, you know, certifying that seventy-two percent of our funds are going to public safety. Um, it, those funds go into four boxes in my mind for public safety. One is for our new officers that we've already hired. And of course, we're, um, we have the strongest number of, of police officers we've ever had in our history. Um, uh, 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 fully funded right now. Now, to Councilman Bowie's, uh, uh, point, it's going to be very interesting when the census comes out for us to see, you know, just what our population is going to look like. So, um, uh, as council members know, our residents responded very strongly, almost to the tune of seventy-nine, eighty percent, uh, respondents, uh, to the census. So we really hope that we're going to get a good, strong, um, representation of how many people we actually have in our community. So we have, but our, our financing for public safety goes into new officers. It goes into, uh, paying their salaries. We want our officers to be, be paid competitive sal- uh, competitive salaries so we can, uh, maintain and, uh, and keep the good officers that, you know, all the good officers that we have. Uh, we have to cover their pension, um, their pension, uh, obligations and promises that we make to them. That would be the third box. And then the fourth box is, uh, public safety facilities. So, uh, in my mind, our Mezal money goes into all four of those, those items. And so we have to be, going forward, we're going to have to be very smart about that. And so, um, so on one point, I would encourage all the council members to go to our website uh, and look at that transparency, uh, link and, and refresh your memories about that initial report that we had. It's, it's some good initial information and it'll be a good building block from where we go from here. And I'm sure if the finance director was listening, an important factor is going to be, you know, where the economy is going in this next year. Uh, you know, we've been advocating to, working hard to try and get Disney reopened. We've been, you know, you know, it'll, it'll be wonderful when we be able to get the Anaheim Convention Center, uh, back in business. And so there's a lot of moving parts that go into all of this. So, uh, from a staff standpoint, there was always going to be a lot of work that the staff and council were going to have to do as we go, move forward, uh, on this project. And so, uh, you know, we, you know, we'll, we'll continue to, uh, work on that and work with council however you would, um, you would prefer that process to go.
The, the reason. My question was, was more directed to the, just, do you think a committee would help in expediting that or deter in expediting that?
Well, this, this is Councilman Bowie. Could I, I say a few words? I, I do agree that we had make, uh, really good progress so far. Uh, but because of the COVID, we now are not sure when, uh, we would be able to, and if we would be able to continue to move it at the pace that we wanted to move it along. My concern is with the shortfall of the, um, you know, finance that we are facing due to COVID, uh, this project will, will be on a slow burner. And I don't want, I do not want that. I, I think that there are other venues that if we proactively pursue them, uh, right now, uh, we, hopefully we would be able to minimize the impact of Co- fin- uh, COVID financial, uh, um, burden, um, on this project. So that's why I would like to see if we can, you know, work with staff to, to move it, continue to take, you know, proactive steps to move it along, uh, as fast as we can. Certainly there are some areas where, where we, we may not be able to, uh, to prevail. But, uh, but we got to try harder, uh, to, to get additional funding. For example, the, the one that was not in the original plan is the, um, uh, perhaps we need to, uh, assert certain, uh, additional, you know, development fee for high-density projects only so that it can be used, uh, to complement the shortfall in the budget for the police headquarters. Uh, at, at the, at the minimum, start the, you know, the design process a little bit further. Right now, we have a, I, I believe we have a design. We have some general side plan, but we don't have the detailed design yet. Why, I, I sho- I wouldn't want to throw it now because of the shortfall in, in the budget, uh, and, and caused it to be delayed another years. So that's why I, I was, uh, hoping that, uh, you know, uh, the council would, uh, adopt, you know, a, a task force to help staff, uh, direct staff to, to look at all, all the additional funding.
Yeah, and that's basically what my question was specifically is, uh, for the city manager is, does he believe a task force would help or, or did not help in the process as, where we're at now? Or is it too early for that?
Uh, you know, my sense is that, uh, you know, before, and this is just, uh, kind of my off-the notion, before we kind of create another layer of, of, of sort of, um, a worker or kind of, I don't know what you want to call it. Um, certainly some of these things that Councilman Bowie is, is talking about, we could, we can, uh, do some work on that so we can, you know, we can do some research on what kind of state and federal money might be available. One of the things that we're, you know, waiting to hear, of course, you've all read that it, uh, at the federal level, there's talk about, uh, whether or not there'll be some money to help with lost revenue for cities. Clearly, a lot of the lost revenue that we've lost here in Garden Grove from our TOT is money that, um, I was originally thinking was money that could help us with our long-term public financing for our public safety, uh, building needs. So, you know, if we were to receive, uh, some, uh, revenue for, for cities to help with that, that could be also one piece of the puzzle. And maybe that's along the lines of what Councilman Bowie was, was sort of referencing. And, and all indications are is that, um, you know, sometime over this lame duck congressional session or shortly after, uh, shortly after, um, you know, swearing in in January that there's, um, that there is, uh, going to be a new round of CARES Act funding to provide support for cities. But, um, you know, so, you know, some of that we're going to start finding out about pretty soon. Uh, separately, we can easily, staff can do some work, uh, for council on some of the ideas about fees for high-density housing. We can report back to council on whether that's, that's something I'm going to have to defer a little bit to the attorney to do some research on probably, to see, you know, what's, what's feasible, what's not. Obviously, we do have a lot of obligations with housing over these next seven years. And, uh, if that's something that could translate into meaningful revenue to the city, um, you know, if you issue debt and issue a bond like Councilman Bowie is talking about, you're going to have to have strong assurance, uh, from, uh, the public financing, financiers, uh, that that, that that revenue is going to be assured for the city. So a lot of questions on that, that we probably could do some independent work and just report back to the council on. Um, so I think we could do some of that, um, but, uh, I defer to the, to the council on, on that.
Um, Mr. City Manager, if I can really quick, just really, really fast. I think, you know, I, I think back to COVID starting and all of us not being able to have a council retreat and have those opportunities to talk about what matters most to us and really take some deep dives. And so I think that this is an opportunity. I think this is an issue that's important to all of us. So I think this might be an opportunity where, as you're saying, maybe look into some of these matters a little more closely, see what's available, see what's going on. And then if after those conversations have been had and after that information's then sought out, then maybe we can, can look at where to go from there. But, um, that's just kind of my, my thought.
Yeah, and that was one of the. I was just going to chime in. Oh, sure. I was just going to chime in that one of the unfortunate casualties of COVID, you know, was we didn't really get to have our, our, our council retreat session with the council members. And that's always, you know, just a really important, um, uh, opportunity for the staff to really get the, get the direction from council. And we had actually really structured the retreat a little different earlier this year to really, uh, take into account some of the things that you guys wanted to do differently. So I think whether we're still in strong COVID, um, uh, mode or not in, in February or early March, when we normally have a retreat, we need to, we really need to have that retreat, whether it's virtual or whatever, with all of, all of you on council so that we, we really get that, um, really get that direction and s- and strong guidance from you.
Hi, uh, Mayor Jones here. Um, just several comments of my own. For one, um, I'm generally not a big fan of creating additional layers, as Scott called it, right? Um, subcommittees and that kind of stuff unless they're really necessary or warranted. It just creates a, another committee, something else, staff has to sort of organize, administer, deal with in, in gathering or whatever. So I don't think they're ever helpful. I think they're, they're usually geared to slow things down, not speed things up from my experience. Um, two is I think this is very important to all of us and we all want to participate in it. So I think, um, you know, we're a, we're a subcommittee of seven that wants to move this along. Um, and third of all, my, my, my gut feel is that there's a natural timing that will occur as we proceed in this anyways. We've done some fairly substantial conceptual design work. I, I think there's still a lot more conceptual design work that needs to be done. I've seen several different plans, different iterations of keeping existing building and modifying, adding on versus demolishing and starting over in different configurations and different, you know, uh, ways it could expand. So, um, there's some conceptual work that's been done, more to do on that, which I think we'll, we'll proceed. I think we all wanted to see that proceed forward. And there's a process therein by going through reviews in all the different departments and ultimately through, um, some kind of internal sense of entitlements and then ultimately, um, creation of engineering drawings and, and all the complexities of that that will necessarily take a while. I mean, at least a couple of years or something before we're ready to actually break ground into it. And those soft costs can probably be absorbed, um, even in our current state of affairs. We can keep those things moving forward so that, you know, when the vaccine comes or maybe it's already here, I don't know, from what people are saying, Pfizer, this and that. Um, and we, we start to bounce back, maybe it'll be more of a V-shaped recovery than we think. And maybe we get there faster. We just need Disney to reopen and our hotels to reopen and things to get going again and we could bounce back pretty fast. So I'm actually optimistic that there's a natural progression of taking us, um, to, to where we all want to go uh, in a pretty timely manner without, um, sort of deviating from the course that we're already on. I think we've already got this as a priority internally. From what I've seen, I mean, it's, it's, it's moving forward and it's going to continue to.
Um, Mayor Jones, uh, colleagues, my, uh, main concern is not about the, the detailed design because, uh, obviously, you know, council member doesn't have the expertise in, uh, designing a police headquarters. I have a lot of, uh, uh, experience in, you know, designing, um, uh, a residential home because I, I work with that a lot. Uh, but not, certainly, uh, nothing, uh, of that would be able to, uh, fit me to deal with the issue concerning, um, you know, police headquarters or, you know, hospital and so on. So I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm not, uh, uh, going to, uh, um, you know, try to chime in, you know, my tooth sand on those area. What concerned me is the COVID because I would like to have our police headquarters completed in, you know, yesterday. Um, uh, so I know, I know it take a long times. Um, uh, just the design phase alone would take, would take, you know, a years or two, um, and then construction. So my concern is I do not want the deficiency in funding, uh, because of COVID, uh, impact that, uh, um, you know, that project and slow it down. So I, I was thinking that, um, uh, perhaps we can, uh, do thing in parallel. Uh, um, normally I was confident that the Mezal money will be sufficient to, uh, to, to fund the project and will be done, you know, um, uh, timely. But now because of COVID, uh, uh, you know, already happening, you know, eight months already and, uh, it may, uh, go into next summer, who knows? But even if we have the vaccine, let's say in, uh, let's say in February or so, it would be a why, uh, for business to get back to normal. Um, the moment that the governor give us the green light to say, let open business a hundred percent, it doesn't mean that, uh, we will be able to, uh, you know, run, uh, fast, uh, you know, within a month or two. It will take, it will take some time for it to slowly go back to normal. So, uh, w- with that in mind, I'm very concerned about, uh, how do we, uh, start looking into other, uh, venues, creative ideas to get more funding so that, you know, the, the risk to delay the project, uh, will be minimal. Now, I do not care, uh, one way or the other, whether we do it via a task force or, or if I have, you know, uh, access to the city management, uh, and the people involved to say, okay, uh, I'd like to help, uh, these are some of my ideas. Uh, let's try to see if we can do it. For example, uh, if I, right now, if I go to Scott, I don't know if I'm empowered to, uh, direct Scott and staff to say, why don't we start to brainstorm on idea to get funding from the federal? Why don't we go to the, uh, to Sacramento to talk to, uh, the governor about, uh, getting funding for it because he want us to build nineteen thousand more units? That is a type of thing that I want to, to, to start, uh, running, uh, right away. Uh, so that by the time, you know, the expert completes the design, we have the funding available to, to start construction. That's what I, I would like to do. And I don't, my one way or the other, whether we have a task force or we don't have a task force, I just want to be able to, to work with, you know, Scott and other people, uh, to, uh, to, 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 to do that.
Yeah, if I could, if I could chime in, I, I mean, obviously, this is a topic that's, uh, important to all the, all the council members, um, and having our facilities in good shape. So, um, I'm, my access, y- y- you all have access to me. I know, um, you know, maybe along the lines of what Councilmember Cloppenstein said, um, you know, I'm happy to meet, um, individually or, you know, one or two of you together on, on this topic and, and start to, um, identify what some of these, uh, issues are that are important to you. And then maybe I can bring back more of a comprehensive report to the full council. If you could give me a li- little time to do that, I could start gathering, uh, uh, information that's important to you. important to you, things like the high-density fees, what are the prospects for CARES funding, anything else, what's public financing look like? And then maybe shortly after the first of the year, that, you know, one of the meetings in January, we could bring back a public, kind of a comprehensive report that kind of hits a lot of these topics and talks about the challenges and opportunities that we might have. Those are my thoughts. But again, I'm open to all of the council members at any time you want to meet with me and talk about some of these things. And I'll pull together Chief DeRay, Patricia Song, our senior staff to work on any of these, any of these sort of things. So I don't want anybody to think that they can't come to me at any time.
Great. So if I would like you and me and some of the staff to, let's say, go and meet some representative from the state or from the federal, that shouldn't be a hindrance, right? Because I'm very respecting, you know, the process. I do not want to go beyond, you know, the resource level that we have because I certainly, I know you guys are busy and I do not want to assert that upon you guys because I know time is money. You know, the time you spend on the initiative that I ask you to do is a cost to the city. So I just want, that's why I want to, I thought if we had a task force, then I can easily say, okay, let's work on this idea, let's work on that idea. But without that, you know, if you guys spend more than, you know, handfuls of hour, then I have to think twice about asking you to work with me on certain ideas.
Well, I would say a lot of the, a lot of you as council members have different contacts, contacts you have at different federal and state levels. And, you know, this is an important topic and so we don't, we're not going to take our eye off the ball. And if any council member has an important suggestion for who we might visit or who we might talk to related to this, that's important for us to do that. And, you know, it could be part of how we report back to the full council too about who we're talking to, what kind of information we're getting, what kind of opportunities we're hearing. You know, that's, from my standpoint, that's relevant and important for us to do with all of you.
Thank you.
Okay. As long as, as long as I have full access to you and staff to work with me to pursue ideas, I'm okay with that. There's no need to form a task force. If, let's just say, for example, I would like staff to spend, you know, twenty, thirty hours on this idea or that idea to do research for me, if we can do that, then I'm okay with it.
Yeah, well, you know, you know, the staff, we're pretty good at trying, I think we're pretty good at trying to work with all of you on a lot of your ideas and we try to stay focused on the things that are important to you, especially as a group. So, you know, this is important to the group and, I think, and we will, you know, this is important work that we need to do. So, you know, it's, I see it as within the, kind of the priorities of council. So I think that's appropriate from the standpoint.
Great. Thank you. I think we've covered this sufficiently. So let's move on to District Five, Councilmember Stephanie Klopstein.
Thank you. I just want to start by thanking my colleagues for their well wishes and support. And I also want to give an early congratulations to Mayor Jones, Councilmember Kim Nguyen, and Mayor Protem O'Neal. Although the election hasn't officially been certified, I know for myself I'm deeply honored to serve the residents of District Five in Garden Grove and I look forward to expressing my gratitude in a deeper way in the weeks to come. I also wanted to mention tonight, we had a written comment about graffiti. I think at the Chapman and Harbor location, obviously, I'll look into that. And I just want to remind residents that we do have a hotline number for graffiti. It's seven one four, seven four one, five three eight one. So if you do see graffiti somewhere in the city, please call that hotline number. And also remember that if you see graffiti and there is kind of an orange colored dot on it, that means that it has been recognized and it's in the process of being corrected. So just kind of something to remember there. And finally, with tomorrow being Veterans Day, I just want to remind the community to fly their flag and please thank a veteran if you can. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. D six, Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Thank you, Mayor Jones. I, you know, thank you, Councilmember Klopstein. I wanted to actually bring up the graffiti as well. We received a written communication regarding this around the Chapman Haster area. And lucky you, Stephanie, it actually is my side of the district, but I'd love to partner with you if we can. I've definitely been in close contact with Chief DeRay along where the Peruvian Hospital is and also with the new secretary of the ANDA is coming in. We've seen an influx of graffiti in that area, even up and down the street that I live on, there's been a lot of activity. So I've been in close contact with him and getting some information from the gang unit and all of that good stuff. So maybe this is something that you and I can both work on because I know it's happening further down in the district as well. And again, it's touching both of our boundaries, so something that we can work on. The next thing I'd like to remind everyone that is on Saturday, November fourteenth at eleven AM, the city will host a community meeting to discuss possible future renovations to Woodbury Park as part of the POC sixty-eight grant application. Neighborhood residents and park users are invited to attend an in-person or virtual meeting. The in-person meeting will be held at Woodbury Park located at one three eight zero zero Rosita Place. To access a virtual meeting, please visit ggcity.org/parkplan. As mentioned earlier, tomorrow is Veterans Day, a couple of notes on that. If you fly your United States flag on Veterans Day, please share a picture online. Senator Tom Umberg would like to send a personalized note from him and his wife, General Umberg as well. And then please take note that around the district, there are several banners honoring our veterans that have been placed by staff. So thank you staff for that good work. And that's, congratulations to those for the election and happy birthday, Councilmember O'Neal.
Thank you. General counsel, do we have anything to report out from closed session?
Mayor, members of the city council, we don't have any reportable action at a closed session this evening.
Thank you. City Manager Scott Stiles.
Just two quick things, Mr. Mayor. One is, it was referenced, December eighth, the staff is working. Those of you that will need to be sworn in on December eighth, we're working on some procedures related to that. We also have a council meeting that night, but in this time of COVID, I know I've talked to the four of you that will be sworn in and we'll have to certainly have some slightly different procedures than we've had in the past. But whatever we do, we want to make sure that it's, we do a live stream of it so the community can see all of you being sworn in and get you properly recognized for that event. At the next council meeting, I'll have some more details for you to share and as we plan that out. So just wanted to mention that. And then finally, the second thing I wanted to mention, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you were going to mention it, but earlier today, we had a nice ceremony congratulating Shea Homes on the opening of their new development on Dahlia Street near Lewis and Garden Grove Boulevard, seventy new single-family homes. It's, we gave them a certificate, recognized them today. It was a nice event. I wanted to just particularly say, I talked to the staff at Shea Homes and they made the comment to me that throughout the whole process of all the homes they had built, that their experience with the City of Garden Grove staff was one of the best that they had had. And all the credit for that goes to Lisa Kim and her staff, Bill Murray and his staff for doing a lot of the hard work related to making a major project like that happen. And Shea Homes was thrilled with how everything turned out. We're thrilled with how everything turned out. And I just wanted to thank the staff for all their hard work on that project. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Happy birthday, Mayor Protem John O'Neal. And with that, I would just like to close tonight's meeting in honor of Howard Singer, his passing and condolences to the family. And with that, we will stand adjourned, everyone. Please enjoy the rest of your evening.
Happy birthday, John.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday, John.
Thank you.
John, happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you. See you guys.
Goodbye, everybody.